All right, if I didn't have your attention, days June 20th, 2023 at 5:00 PM, through City Hall Council Chambers, I call the public meeting to order.
Tom's on his way. Tom's on his way.
Any questions from the public on the agenda? The agenda on the public hearing is the $50,000 appropriation from Public Safety Loet has matching funds to purchase a new police vehicle. Any questions on that? We went over this last month, or earlier this month during a council meeting, but we had to redo it because of a glitch in the time the paper put it in. I think we were like 12 hours short or something.
Yeah, I was told, back in February, I was told by the Tribune that if we had it in by the Saturday prior, two Saturdays before the meeting, that would work. And, because she counted up Saturday, Sunday, Monday, blah, blah, blah. Well, so I went to put it into the state and it said I was one day short. It has 10 days have to pass and then you can have the meeting. So what's going to have to happen in the future is it'll have to be in the paper on Wednesday, the second Wednesday before the meeting. So this was, this was okay as long as we had on Tuesday, we were okay. I confirmed that with three people now and she was just misinformed or she didn't count right when she told me back when I first started.
Okay, also, second agenda on the public hearing is public hearing on expenditures from ARP funding in the amount of $886,891. Any questions on that from the public?
That number is exactly the same as we had last time. There's one minor change. If you look at your list back there, after we put the money in the paper, whatever, Dustin, the city attorney's laptop died, I mean, just flat out died. So I talked to Chief Sofianos. We moved $2,500 from the, yeah, from the citywide security cameras account to the $2,500 for Dustin. Chief told me they won't get it all done this year anyway. This 177.5 will be more than enough to get this year and get everything running and then we have to have a little bit more for next year. But, but that was an easy way to do it without, without, um...
In, in last year's budget, we had budgeted for a laptop for him. So was this like we purchased one and then it just died and now we're purchasing another one?
I don't remember. He, he, we looked at his budget before we did this and there was not money in there for a new laptop anywhere. So it was not, it must not have been in the budget or something because we looked at every line item on his accounts and there was nothing in there for it.
I'll go back and double check, but I believe we did. It might not have been 2,500, but...
There was, there was not, there, there wasn't enough in any of his budgets. There was $5,000, but he pays for over $4,000 for his legal books a year. So there wasn't any money there and that just did, there was office supplies for, for about 1,000. So it just wasn't, it wasn't enough money there anywhere else. So, so that's what we did and Chief said it would be okay, right?
Yeah, there, there's no way we'll get all the cameras up this year. It's already, we're already halfway through the year.
But, but you will get a good start.
We'll get them ready after we get up.
Well, Chief, how many cameras are we purchasing, you know, year after year?
It'll be 66 total cameras when it's done. That's only the price of about three cameras there. So I doubt we're going to get that far by the time we got our fiber optic cable. The main thing will be getting around Miami's Ford area, City Hall done and branch out from there.
Anything else on the expenditures of the ARP fund? If not, next public hearing on $70,000 appropriation from Public Safe at Loet, safety Loet for equipping police vehicles with in-car crambers. Any questions from the public on that? Seeing none, any questions, council on that? Moving right along, public hearing on $1 million expenditure from SEATFUND for local match proportion for ready grant for Broadway Landing Project. Any questions, comments from the audience? Questions, comments, council? Okay, that concludes our agenda on the public meeting. I have to keep it open for about another 10 minutes and then we'll close that and go on with our regular meeting.
Hey, Mayor, if I could make a comment about the advertising, you know, and, and a lot of communities are with, are facing the same challenge. You know, the state statutes require us to advertise for public hearings and those kind of things. In a lot of smaller communities, newspapers have downsized and they're not publishing as much as they used to in the past. And in a lot of cases, in a lot of smaller communities, the papers not even, not exist anymore. So there is something that's being worked right now, maybe for this next legislative year, to make some amendments to the statute to allow these types of hearings or notices to be posted on social media, on websites, those kind of things to kind of take that burden off of newspapers when it's, you know, you gotta do like, you gotta pull out a calculator and figure out, okay, well, on the second Tuesday of every month, they only publish why or, you know, whatever their formula is, it's, it's just, it's hard to work with. So, and this is statewide, so it's not just us, but it's statewide economic developers. I know, talking with Mayor Brown in the auditor's office, I know the auditor's group is trying to get some revenue from that as well. So everybody's experienced in the same way.
That's interesting. My, my brother was a newspaper editor and this is, we're not on record or anything, but it's just kind of an interesting concept that we never thought that newspapers would be, be this way or it's just, yeah.
Can I speak? Public comment on the money we're going to spend?
Yeah, come right up here.
Step up, state your name.
My name is Bobby Anne, sorry. Morning rates improve, live here a whole lot. Um, I'm not a public speaker, I don't make mistakes. I should have brought me some notes, but I did. Um, I've been meaning to come here for a long time. Sometimes I feel like we're kind of in two different cities here. I don't know if some of you are aware. I believe last time I checked, we're in the fifth force county in Indiana. I could be mistaken, I could be correct. I believe it's the fifth force county in Indiana. It's getting tougher to live here. And the cost of living is going up through the roof. We just got a new assessment. $20,000 increase, boom, right on your tax bill. My mom gets a social security check, $861, I believe it is. What do you think that $20,000 tax is going to do to her, to her check? A trash bill increase, what, 100% the last two years? I mean, at what point are we driving people out of the city? Because I know as soon as we build these new fancy houses out there, what's going to happen to my taxes again? And, and it's hard because, I don't know if any of you guys know where Bloomfield's at? You guys know where the area Bloomfield's at in, here in town?
Yeah.
That's where I bought my house, be 20 years in August. For 20 years, I've asked to get an alley paved. I've been pretty much told to kick sand until this year. This year, I reached out to a couple of councilpeople that we had. Finally got something done. 20 years I've been eating rous, dust sandwiches on my back porch. 20 years I've been told, we don't have no money for that. For the last three years, I've been trying to get the curb around my house fixed. There was legitimately a two-foot section left of my road. Three years I had to fight with the street department to get anything done at all. Mayor's office blew me off multiple times. So now we're going to come along and we're going to build in all these new fancy housing additions. This is going to get curbs, sidewalks, storm drains. I don't have any of that out in Bloomfield. I have no storm drains, I have no sidewalks. I just recently got a paved alley. But then we're going to run off, we're going to build all these new housing additions. We're going to put sidewalks, curbs, storm drains and all of them. So when something goes wrong up there, are we going to sit around and not fix them? Or is that going to be the first thing we fix? Or are we telling everybody else? What was the exact words, I believe I was told by the street department? I'm insignificant because there's not enough people that live on my street for me to matter. So are we going to go back to that? Or am I going to be told that I don't have money for anything else? We're in the fifth force county in Indiana. Somehow, we've got this build a dream strategy where we're going to build all this stuff and everybody's going to want to move here. Okay? We gotta have jobs, we gotta be able to work here. You know, we gotta be able to raise families here. If you're raising the cost of everything up, people aren't going to be able to live here. I've got kids looking to move out of the city. They can't afford to live here. The cost of living is going through the roof. I believe last I checked, I, I think we were 65% higher than all the surrounding counties around us. I don't know what bringing all this overpriced housing is doing for the people of the city, but I forgot. I mean, I guess we made it clear that we didn't really do any of this for the people in the city. But at the same time, the rest of us are having to pay for it. Because there's going to be no money for me to get my streets fixed if I want to run it out to these new little fancy housing places. I mean, what do we got, 171 on the unit now? What, another 81 houses we're talking about building? I'm not good with math, that's what, 252 people? That's one unit? 252 people are ready to move to Peru? For what? No jobs? We want to move here so we can commute? If the cost of living is cheaper at the places you're commuting to, then why would we should move here? You know, we, we gotta start doing something for the actual people that live in this city. We've lost major employers. Have we added any employers?
Absolutely.
Yes. Major employers?
Absolutely.
We've lost big factories and we haven't replaced it with new jobs.
Yes, we have.
We've replaced them a lot, not, not to the point of what we, but there's more of them.
What's our main industry here, Peru?
You tell us, you're up here and this, I want to, I want to call a point of order right now that what you're saying needs to be brought up at a regular meeting, not a special meeting.
I'm sorry. Listen, I'm not, I'm not fancy, I've built a public council. I've seen, I've seen a public notice of a thing and I finally got the nerve up to come here and voice my concerns. Because when you speak out against things in this city, you do get retaliated against. I've been retaliated against every single time I spoke out against something.
Mayor Hewitt, this is a public hearing to where he can say these things.
I will definitely, I will definitely tell you how. We can do that in different meetings, right?
Yeah, my door's open. That's why you need to come and talk to me on individual...
Your office blew me off over my concerns that I got retaliated against.
When?
Um, well, the last three years, I reached out to my street.
When, specific, I need specifics.
About my street, on Adams Street, that had a foot left of the street that I couldn't get repaired. You blew me off.
I didn't, no, no.
I did it for 20 years, I've tried to get an alley paved. Three years I've tried to get the street paved. I just got it paved last week. And that wasn't because of me. That's because I had some other people step in and put some pressure on. And, and it shouldn't have to come to that.
Well, anytime you want to sit and talk, come up and give me your concerns so that we can do dates and stuff.
Why you message the people in your office that run your Facebook account, run your messaging services, they don't blow people off, we'd be rude to them when they come to them with complaints. I could show you the messages. I mean, it's, it's getting harder to live here.
Before I can comment on it, I need to see the messages to find out...
I've, I've got copies of...
Don't you, don't you have access to your own Facebook in your own office?
I've got copies of all the emails about the streets since I've become involved with it and I went right away and took a look at it. I called the street department and your streets and your alleys are paved, but I do know that they did not respond to any of that.
And, and the only reason I got it taken care of is because Betsy and Kathleen stepped up for me. That's the only reason. Three years trying to get, just get a street fixed. I've got no storm drains. I get no sidewalks. I could barely get my streets fixed, yet we're going to add in all this to these new neighborhoods. Now you think they're going to have to wait 20 years to get something fixed when something breaks over there? Or you think that's going to be number one on the bribery list? Because it ain't going to be me.
Adams Streets in Oakdale, isn't that?
No, Bloom, Bloomfield. Adams runs, Adams, there's three separate Adams Streets.
Okay.
I live on Adams out of Bloomfield.
Behind Stevens Appliance.
Okay.
It's Bloomfield.
All right.
It's, it's getting harder to live here, guys, and I don't know, maybe we ought to not be in the corporate housing business where people can't afford it to actually live in this city. Maybe we want to focus that energy in somewhere else, maybe try to get some jobs here. Because it seems like, you know...
Trying, trying.
Trying. Seems like we're focusing our energy maybe in the wrong spot? I don't know. I mean, because we're losing people as we speak.
We have gotten a few factories here. Jim could tell you about the different ones that we've got.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not on the council. I, I'm not a rich person, I've lived in Peru, I've lived in Peru my whole life. And I'm telling you, people in your city are struggling. There's more food pantries open now than I've ever seen in my life. We have homeless people.
I know.
But the answer is, let's bring in really expensive housing and nobody that actually lives in the city can afford it.
Mr. Hennison, sorry. We've been having several conversations the past, well, you and I and your wife, excuse me, have talked for probably over a year with, with Betsy. But we've been having conversations locally about we need to take care of what we have.
Yeah, we, we, we've got a lot of things to disrepair.
It's, 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 it's tough because you, well, it's really not tough. It's, we need investment and then, but yet we're not taking care of what we have.
We're taking care of the things we take care of, but it seems like all our plans always include giving money to certain people and all the money we smoke is something downtown while the rest of you, city problems. You know, there's an old saying, you can wrap in a box and wrap a bow around it, sell a box of crap. You can put all your money in your downtown, but if your streets are falling apart, if you can't get your alleys paved, it, it, if it's to a point where people can barely live in your city, then what's the point? You know, you're raising your fees up. My mom's on fixed income. What do you tell her? You know, she didn't get a cry and, you know, raise everybody's fees up to get her a social security raise. That ain't going to happen. But we're already talking about raising that fee up again already on people.
What fee?
Trash fee.
No, we're not.
Right in the meeting, it said within three years. Mr. Sheik sat up here and said within three years. I mean, at what point? We gotta start maybe focusing on the people, all the people, not just a select few individuals that always are included in our plans, that always get money. I mean, your town's struggling. Your young people are going to be leaving. Ah, I mean, I'm a nobody, but I got kids. And I got one kid that's not going to come back to Peru. I got one kid looking to move out of Peru. I mean, it, it, you've got, one of our, one of our, I personally feel one of our biggest assets in this county is our school systems. You know, public school systems. Right now, public schools are under attack. We, we didn't give our teachers a raise this last legislative session. We managed to give everybody else raises, but not our teachers. That's what makes my county a good place to live because you've got three public schools that you can go to. Great place to raise a family. But if you can't afford to live here and raise your family, that's not ours. I don't know, I think maybe, I don't know, maybe it's time to re, maybe look to replace some people and maybe head in a different direction. I mean, I know Mr. Tib has served Peru for a long time, but maybe it's time for a different direction. You know, because I, you know, I want something for the rest of Peru, not just certain individuals. I'm not rich, you know, I don't make a lot of money. I just live here and pay taxes, that's all.
What I'm going to request that you do is come to our next council meeting on July 10th and bring all your concerns forward because tonight we're only supposed to be discussing what, at a public meeting, what I gave us.
Oh, that's what I'm, I'm here discussing.
And, and what, what I want, what I want you to do is come back on July the 10th and talk to Kurt anytime before then to get put on the agenda.
So all these people that move into these, what, minimum $250,000 houses are going to, what's that going to be, what taxes?
I don't, I have no idea what $250,000 houses you're talking about.
Are we building houses with this money?
No, 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 we're not.
Not at all.
It's infrastructure.
It's all that, right?
It may be for developer to come in to do that, but not right now. And it's also for other entities to come in out there besides the housing.
So that there will be business going out there to support the city. Is what we're heading for.
But right now, I'm going to ask you to come back on the 10th of July, get put on the calendar, because this tonight, by Robert's rule of orders, we can't discuss what you're wanting to discuss tonight.
So I, I don't know. I just seem, I just seem to notice, I knew what the notice is for. I knew what the money is going to be used for.
And the money for this is, is earmarked by the state. It can only be spent for this particular thing to match a grant. And the grant was applied for by Makita and it was approved by the state for this particular project. We have no control over that otherwise. If we don't, we don't allocate the, the matching funds, we, we lose it.
Do we, do we have to fix this project or we're getting fixed something else?
I don't know.
If, if you're going to speak, we're going to need you to come up here because people aren't being able to hear people who are in the audience.
If we don't spend the money, we won't, we won't get the other million from the state.
SEATF, SEATF money, are you asking if...
No, he's asking about, there was a committee, Bobby, that looked at a bunch of different projects to use this. I was not on that committee. You were on that committee, right, Mayor?
It was the ready committee.
Were you on the committee?
There was a bunch of projects that have...
Okay, I, I wasn't on it, so I don't know what other projects were presented, but there was a committee and then they selected projects. So what you're saying is true, there could have been other projects picked, but this is the only, this is what was picked. And so, like, my struggle is, I don't want to lose out on that million dollars that we can get because if we don't do this project now where we're at, we won't get that million dollars.
And, and Mr. Hennison, what you're saying is so valid. And we want you to come back, I want you to come back, the mayor wants you to come back. Because you didn't, you didn't.
No, you didn't.
You didn't.
No, you, you're where you belong.
It'll be easier the second time for you.
No, you're where you belong.
Think about, when you make votes, maybe, so maybe this is just the main thing I was saying. When you make votes, think about the people in your town that are struggling.
That's what I'm trying to think about.
Think about being in the city.
That's why we're here. Can I address something here? I'm a retired teacher and I know about what you're talking about and I understand where you're coming from, but I want to tell you about the trash fee. It's $20. And the reason that it's $20 is because all the rates have gone up. We have no control over what those rates are. And we're getting off pretty cheaply for $20 a month because my cousin is paying $42 a month to have his picked up. He's out in the county. So, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but you, you, you have to understand too, we're responsible for the budget for this city and how it's spent, where the money goes. And if we don't have enough to pay those fees over there, your trash is going to end up sitting out beside your house for the rest of the year.
That, that's not the reason that they were increased. The reason we went up to 20 was because we gave the streets, I voted against it, but we gave the streets department a sizable raise. That's why the rates went up. And it's apples and oranges to talk about county pickup versus city pickup.
Actually, I'm affected by this too because I live on a street that has no curbs and I'm on a fixed income, so I understand where you're coming from. We had to raise those fees. We had to. And you can gripe about it all you want and the best way to talk to anybody about all of this is to go to his office and sit down with him and talk to him.
You just make an appointment.
I'm not graping about anything. My mom's on, my mom's on the fixed, fixed income and we raised...
I understand that.
So am I.
Well, and the mayor has also raised a point of order that we're not supposed to be doing this, so we need to end this, okay?
Thank you for adding in and telling me to end it, I appreciate it.
If you would get on the schedule for July 10th, anytime before that, come up, sudden appointment, come up and talk to me. Because I'll be more, I'll be more than happy to sit and talk with you.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. I'm sorry, guys, I was, you know, the right meeting, the right time, so, next time, next time.
All right. Anything else from the audience or the council? If not, I will close this public meeting at 5:25 and call to order the special council meeting on June 20th, 2023. Everybody stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for the invocation. Apparently Brent Wedding couldn't make it tonight, so with that...
Sure, be happy to. Our Most Gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for the city. We thank you for the officials and all the public officials and citizens that serve this great community. Lord, we just ask your presence here at this meeting. Give the council wisdom and everything that they do. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Roll call.
Anderson.
Here.
Guston.
Here.
Lutho.
Here.
Ramsey.
Yep.
Russell.
Here.
Sayad Ashni.
Yeah, here.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, First Order of Business is Resolution Number 11. An ordinance to appropriate $50,000 from Loet as a matching fund to fund the purchase of new police vehicles.
I'll make a motion to, are we just going to reconsider it or adopt? What do you want, what do we have?
Consider first.
Consider, I'll make a motion to consider Resolution 11, 2023.
Second.
Roll call.
Yep. Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lutho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Any questions on this? This is the same thing that already been approved by the council at our last meeting.
Okay, make a motion to adopt Resolution 11, 2023.
I'll second that.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Lutho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Sayad, Russell.
Yes.
Sayad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Tom, if you'll pass that first one down for me, that one for the $50,000.
Number 11.
Resolution 11.
I got number 11.
There's four of them there, so.
Fifty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, next order of business, resolution number thirteen, an appropriation from the ARP fund for the city of Peru, Indiana, in the amount of eight-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-ninety-one dollars.
I'll make a motion to consider resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Any questions or anything referenced to resolution number thirteen, twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion, we adopt resolution thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second. One of us.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
No.
Okay, moving right along, resolution number fourteen, an appropriation from Public Safety Loet to purchase in-vehicle cameras for the police department in the amount of seventy-thousand dollars.
I make a motion that we consider, resolution number fourteen.
I'll second that.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Any questions reference resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-three?
Make a motion, we adopt resolution fourteen, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, moving right along, next order of business, resolution number fifteen, an appropriation of one million dollars from the Seated Fund as local match for the city of Peru, Indiana, to fund infrastructure improvements for the Broadway Landing Project.
I make a motion that we consider, resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Mr. Ted, I think maybe you, do you feel like you need to explain anything or discuss this?
Unless the, I mean, I-
Would you mind coming up? I have, I just have a question. What do we know exactly, I mean, not even a guess, of what potentially is gonna be there? I know that that's, you don't have a crystal ball.
Well, no, I mean, we do have a crystal ball, and it all goes in, and you have no development strategy. If you are looking at that, you see that that area, I mean, when you look at the potential growth for the city, it normally would, you would expect that growth to happen outward US point forward. So that's the area that we're targeting for growth for the city. Makes sense, visibility from point four, main artery in and out of the valley, down with US, or what we call, which we, so it makes sense for us to look at development and then add area. We're looking at commercial, we are looking at service type of industry, and yes, we are looking at potential for housing to be in that. The housing study that we did, which I think some, can't remember, housing study, we did have some folks on that committee as well, but the housing study we did totally definitely need for single-family homes in a variety of ways. Single-family homes in the range that previous gentleman was talking about, that he felt was not appropriate for the community, but then also the leased units, and also, in addition, we're working on another location with the north or southern, uh, voluntary area that's starting to turn into lower-income apartments. So we're working a variety of different housing, uh, Broadway Landing is best, or is being looked at for one of those areas. But a lot of people in the community say, well, why don't we have a shop, why don't we have restaurants, why don't we have, we need a bubble hotel, we need this, we need that. Well, that's the site for this, okay? And part of what we're doing here is investing in infrastructure, adjusting into the site to be able to accommodate the rest of the development through that. I mean, we're probably entering the site maybe two to three hundred feet and building back roadway, which is gonna benefit by taking a traffic off of the highway, but we're stubbing in water and sewer, we're not running water and sewer completely through the whole sixty-six acres. That's gonna be on the developer of that road, but we are, what we're doing is making that property accessible for future development, stubbing in the water and sewer.
As far as the developer that is looking at, the Broadway Landing developers, is that the LLC that you've mentioned before? Who is that?
Well, the owners of that property, that-
That's the question I need to ask, thank you.
Right, it is Dave Van Valen, is one of the owners, and Bill Rustbauer is one of the owners. And again, we're not investing in running the water and roads and everything completely through the site. We are stubbing in the water and sewer, which is gonna benefit, is not benefiting the citizens of Lake County. The more people and users we can put on the water system or on the infrastructure, the better off, because those costs get spread amongst the public users. So all of that infrastructure that we're putting in is not gonna be owned and operated by the developers. It's gonna be owned and operated by utilities, which is gonna pull revenue from the water and services that are used. So, and this is simple, I mean, this happens in other developments across the state. And I would just like to clarify one other thing, with the developments that take place down on Canal Street, the city really has all that water and sewer and those kind of things, it's all been put in by the developer. Granted, we provided them a tax abatement, in a sense, to help with some of that site construction, but the sidewalks, curbs, those things that were mentioned, and I apologize, I don't know about Oakdale or some of the other communities that maybe that is in need, but I do know that you haven't necessarily owned it through the tax abatement, invested in sidewalks, curbs, and those kind of things.
You're right.
But I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Well, the land, the tax abatement, and then that other eight-hundred-thousand dollars that was given from the city county, you sell, I mean, there's more than just that.
The soil conditions, the additional foundation work that all had to be done, and unknown items that came with that CSX property, that nobody, even us, and I bet CSX didn't even know about.
Right, I'm just clarifying, it was more than just the abatement that we gave them.
Yeah, I'm saying, but there were other situations that resulted with that property that added to the overall cost of the property.
But without that extra work, we wouldn't have that project.
I'm sorry.
Said without that extra work, we would not have that project.
No, no, we wouldn't.
And without this infrastructure, you're never gonna get anything on the Broadway Landing side of it.
No.
I mean, a hospital or a hotel's not gonna come in and connect all the way back into Peru with their main sewer and water. Not even feasible.
So, again, we're just positioning ourselves for future development. And again, the hotel study suggests that a hotel building there, Rook and I have already talked with a restaurant owner that wants to build a new commercial building. Going back to Pat's question that she asked in my board meeting last time, we did get an update with Bill Roebel, who owns the commercial building there with First Farmers Homes, and he's talking to two separate entities right now. One is a national restaurant chain going into that area, and the other one is kind of a, I would say, unique kind of operation to this region.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Okay, any other questions on resolution fifteen, twenty twenty-three?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
I second.
Roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Guston.
Yes.
Plotho.
Yes.
Ramsey.
Yes.
Russell.
Yes.
Syad Ashni.
Yes.
Wolf.
Yes.
Okay, anything else from the council? Any questions, comments? If not, we're up for adjournment.
I just want to say to you, Mr. Hennasari, what you're discussing, talking about, referring